With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Uh, we have a form. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Rich is not here today. And we will go to drainage. Um, just general questions. I have something. About two weeks ago, we had, maybe three weeks ago, we had Mike spray DD six lateral nine. And at the time I thought, and we had not, and Val has not heard back from Nate. She tried to get all him. And then about ten days ago, I said I'd get ahold of him. Well, I didn't get ahold of him because there was no use calling him. If I couldn't get Rich to maybe have Mike take on a little more, if he was available. But I don't want to step on Nate's toes either. So the first question in that process is, is it too late?
It's gonna be pretty soon, I think. But they, they do a select for trees. I know, and we've done it up north. I'm sorry, I don't know if you were on or not, but getting complaints on some stuff and they waited, waited, and that's when his dad was still in charge and he went up and sprayed him in the fall, I think. And I don't know exactly when, but it did work. So there's a fall spray they can use. I don't know what, where they do, you know, and I don't know how late that goes, but you know, with the dry weather and stuff.
Well, the dry weather, it's not a ton of moisture in trees though.
Right.
I was aware of that, you know, so, but it's still, it's still the growing season.
It's still growing.
A little bit, yeah, right now. I think so. I mean, that was as good a time as any.
I would assume I'd have been up there and see on Leagerson's or on that flat six. I'm sure they could be pretty well, well, didn't use falling off. I know, I would think so.
So if I get ahold of Rich and he's conducive to the fact of letting Mike do a few of these, I'll give Nate a call.
Yes.
Because the one that I'm looking at the most of is DD ten was in twenty one and twenty two. It never got done. In twenty two, we didn't add it. So then we came back in and added it in twenty three year.
So he didn't want to do it. He wanted at least a full year's of growth on DD ten afterwards. Well, we've had that and then some now we're, you know, we're pushing.
So my opinion is if we can get Mike to do some of it, is that the place to start, DD ten, considering it's been left for a couple of years?
Yeah, there's pretty good access on that one because I think it's CRP all the way around. So it wouldn't be like you're going kind of like flat six up there. I mean, you know, they just did that and the CRP there so they could access it really easy. That'd be one. I don't know. What other ones are on the list that are that bad? I mean, the other ones I think have been taken care of in like, you know, the three year rotation.
Right. There's, there's a few that we had just, we've worn out or done work on that. We want to make sure we, we've removed trees. We want to make sure we stay ahead of that.
Well, that's eleven then. That was worked on not that long ago.
Okay.
Over here. Yep.
That's on the list.
That's the first one on the list.
Okay.
Then we got thirteen, thirty four, nineteen, twenty two, twenty three, and eight.
Well, as far as any of, you know, weed spraying, I mean, it's just general tree spraying. I mean, he's pushing the limits of getting it done this fall. I mean, if he's not here, I don't.
So if I can get Rich to break Mike away for, if he's got time and Nate's okay with that, I would think he would be if he's not getting to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure taking on for his dad, it's.
Right. It's a learning process. And I mean, it might be something, you know, that we're gonna have to watch again next spring and actually, you know, maybe put them back on the list again for next year, just to double back on.
Right.
You know.
Okay, so I'll talk to Rich and then if he's good, I'll talk to Nate on this.
I mean, Mike is still spraying road riches and I know he's spraying trees, so. But he's out, he's out.
Well, it didn't take him long to get.
No.
DD. I mean, it was done right now. So I just thought I'd run that by you.
I, I have no issues with it.
I got you.
I know I'm getting points on DD ten. That's the one I'm.
Right, which is the.
They're worried. The guys are worried. They don't want to have to cut trees out of their.
Well, they, they just paid for all of it cleaned out and they don't want, because of that problem.
Yeah, at least if we can get him to do that one.
Yeah.
So take on, take on DD ten.
At least upper or bottom or upper on that, I guess.
Well, there's just three of them.
Yeah.
Stand the one up.
We probably have him take on uh DD ten upper, DD ten upper lateral seven, and DD ten upper lateral nine. In other words, just wipe that DD ten bill out.
Yeah, he can do it.
So don't.
That's the one on Leelwood.
Yeah.
North of the Georgia.
Uh, Leelwood near thirty eight.
Yeah.
Kind of goes through there.
Up north.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That one needs to be done.
Yeah, north of.
I'll get ahold of Rich and then I'll get ahold of Nate.
Okay.
So then if we end up in the same situation next year, are we gonna have to put it out for bids or something? Are there more people out there?
There's probably other services. I mean, we've had BMW now, ever since I've been on the board before, and they've always, I mean, they've always done a really good job. We're real happy with it, you know, but.
And he's gonna have more of a handle on what he can really do.
And.
And if he's got too much, yeah, we might have to do that, Jackie.
Yeah.
You know, so.
On drainage also, so that one down south of Manly, thirty five, I think.
Yeah.
The railroad was talking about doing some work in there and while that's got pushed out to twenty twenty six now, that railroad project.
Yeah.
Um, so obviously there's tile in there. It's got tree root issues. Do we want to? It's two landowners pretty well farm everything around it. So I think I can just talk to both of them instead of getting them back in for me because it's not gonna happen now anyways. Um, consider just pulling in a new tile.
I would do.
I'd move one. Non-perforated, so we could hopefully eliminate the tree. Just go, could just move it a little bit, connect the same spots, so that tree root.
Even though it would be an improvement, I'd do that because they're.
Yeah, and we're gonna be fine.
Yeah, don't say it. Don't say that word.
Still be repaired.
It's a repair.
Even if you're moving it off the side.
We're putting the same size, sizes. We're replacing it. We're just putting it right next to it. Was that?
Improvements will come where they want it up, upsize it a little bit and.
Because it's probably clay and concrete.
Change of depth and that stuff.
And we're not, we're just going from A to B with the same size, instead of being clay or.
I'd move it over quite a ways though.
It'd be plastic, so.
Whatever they can do, yeah.
Yeah, whatever they can do and still catch the drainage.
Yep. So and then I know there, there's surface water drainage issues that have become a part of that railroad thing, but that's just something we're just gonna have to work on or work with once they do that project of if they remove those trees to create a ditch kind of along there because a lot of the road comes off our roads, all falls into that corner. And it should continue on along the tracks and there's culverts underneath. They're all dead back to the north, so. And it used to do that, but then since the trees have become overgrown and all that, it doesn't do anything. So. All right, I'll talk with those landowners then and, and we'll see about if one of them wants to hire. Um, I think they're both five J if he, J or if he can do it. Uh, but put a new, whatever that was, ten or twelve inch tile through there. Just same size, just connect same spot. Get away from it a little bit, just going non-perforated.
Yeah.
But at least, at least there'll be drainage for the rest of the system. They'll lose a little bit there um on that section of field, but the other couple hundred acres.
Yep, yep.
Or whatever, probably a thousand acres. We're about to do that. So, okay, I'll take care of that one then.
All righty. Uh, drain claim was.
I'm hoping to approve uh drainage claims and stamp warrants.
I will, sir.
I have a motion in a second to approve the drainage claims and the stamped warrants. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. While we're doing it here, is there a motion to approve the claims?
Second.
I have motion in a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
And then there's payroll claims too.
Motion to approve the payroll.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second to prove the payroll claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Oh, sorry.
They could, this is payroll.
Yep.
Yeah, regular.
Payroll and regular claims.
Um, I have a payroll change for Marilyn Stainer and Lisa.
Buckle, buckle.
There you go, buckle. Is there a motion to approve those two payroll changes for the sheriff's department?
A motion to approve payroll changes.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Any liquor license or anything?
No. We do that resolution quick.
Well.
Since it's not nine o'clock yet. No, the, the one for setting the, officially setting the hearing date.
Do we have to wait till nine?
Not for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just the P M V C.
Um, resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty one, set public hearing date for proposed rezoning for Chris Natty Ruggen. Um, it's set up for October second at nine AM as a public hearing date on parcel oh two nineteen four hundred oh oh eight for the proposed rezoning from agricultural ag to light industrial. Is there a mo- is there a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty one?
So moving.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote sneezy.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lobert, aye. Motion carries.
Okay, so then um, did you find out if the landowners have been notified and all that good stuff?
They're.
Were they far enough away?
They, well.
Still landowners.
They're still landowners. Um, they weren't notified for planning and zoning, but we looked in, I had Matt look into that. And it was because Jeff read it as homeowners, not landowners. So now he said we need to at least let them know for this public hearing, October second, and we should be just fine, according to him.
And who needs to do that?
Well, that was the next question. Is that a Matt deal or a you deal?
Aye.
Storm.
He's done it.
So I'll get ahold of Matt and tell him to get those two, if not three, landowners within five hundred feet a letter on this. Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
And did you get the check for a hundred fifty bucks?
Yes, I did.
Oh, it's. Yeah, he said it was laying on his desk since first Friday. Um, oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's up quick.
Okay. At nine AM, it's long. I read that as a resolution. It's not the campus. So, sorry about that.
Yeah.
The next thing we're gonna talk about is water system improvement project. I seen that we had a check go to DNR on that. So did we hear anything back?
I, yeah, that's probably for the permit or whatever, but no, Jason's still waiting to hear back. And he was also considering um he was gonna get costs and he'll, he'll be here either next Monday or the following Monday again. I think he's gonna get cost of putting a possible four inch line next to the four inch that's going out for the tower, because at that tower there's well, there's one or two wells out there.
Two, okay.
Two that were drilled and never utilized, obviously.
Well, there's a third one.
There's three, there's three of the, right at the water plant now. There's two out by the big tower.
Yeah.
So he's, and they're, he's trying to find history on those because if possible, if well issues are there, we could run that uh well, run a direct line through that four inch line to our water plant now and then put it into the system.
Correct.
So he's gonna see what costs would be just in pipe because the bulk of the work is done. We just put another pipe in, so he's gonna try to figure that and see if that would be feasible to do it or not. Otherwise, if something like that ever changes, a new water plant maybe need to be built out underneath that water tower or her, and that area by the blue water tower. So.
Are these wells the ones that are just west of us?
Yeah, there's one like northwest and.
Yeah, there's one at northwest.
Tower. Yeah.
I know the one that's northwest. Where's the other one?
This one's south of the water tower.
On the big, the blue one.
South and west, southwest too.
Yeah. I remember seeing, you see the one.
I know the one in the northwest.
Yeah, signs are. But yeah, he was gonna look, look for that or look to see what cost that would be, just if that ever did happen. So we could utilize that now.
Right.
Or put it in now and then if we had to utilize in the future, we would, so. But I'm like, yeah, I think he's still waiting to get the blessing from the DNR for approval on the, the plan for the permit design, so.
Um, water and sewer rates. Did he get, he, when he was here, what, a month, six weeks ago, he said he had to get more information from you. You guys have been conversing.
Yeah, I used to a while ago. He could have whatever he wanted whenever, so.
He's got everything. That's why he'll be here. Like I said, I, either this next Monday or the following Monday for a meeting to.
Take care of that.
Yeah.
Because I'd seen we had two more months of losing money again, so. Yeah, and that's been over a year now, so.
A little longer now.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Melissa, are you on? Yes, you are.
I went to uh C V N on Friday and I founded two businesses that I'm going to follow up on, one for each county. Um, and then this week, tomorrow is jam packed full of meetings with um, our workforce development state board meeting, Papa John advisory board meeting. So I'll be in and out tomorrow. Um, and then hopefully it'll um slow down a little bit so I can get some stuff done in the office.
Okay. You guys have anything for?
Nope.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes.
Have a good week.
You too.
Uh, EMS, you guys said you had some meetings coming up. Did you make them to those?
Yeah, well, I know they had Hamilton last week, got a mentioned they had it out with the west, west meeting last week. I didn't go to that. We've got, we've got one tonight.
Yeah.
Down there. So.
Oh, another thing that's been brought to my attention is whether we use ARP funds or we don't use ARP funds, if we decide to use them before we start sending checks to the three entities involved, do we want all the twenty eighty agreements signed?
We have. We have to.
We have to, we should.
Right.
You would think.
Everywhere else. Have twenty eighty to give money to anybody else, right?
Right, at the same time.
Yeah.
So those.
Even though it's not our county tax dollars, it is federal tax dollars.
Because you're gonna need a twenty, you're gonna need five of them down there. Draft and Manley and.
Well, is ca- is the county gonna need one for this year then? Because they're making deals for themselves, not for the county.
We're paying it on their behalf.
I would say.
I picked up from Jeff when I talked to him, but don't quote me on that one is no, we do not want to sign it.
Or just, just an agreement, just.
We're just, all we're doing is, we're gonna take the dispatcher printout and we're gonna pay off from that towards the three entities. You know, all we're doing basically is paying their bills.
And you're not, yeah, you're not donating. You're, you're paying for a service.
We're paying for a service. We're paying their services. So no, I'd have to say I, we might want to check with Jeff again on that. That's a while ago since I checked with him on that, but but yeah, well, you could do, I suppose you can do it as a district. And do one, right?
We probably could, just even though it's not considered a district, we could just include these three townships and these two communities as long as we have signatures from each township and each community, instead of doing five separate twenty eighties, you could go number one and just everybody is, since it's coming from the same place. You know, same as over there, if they're covering that area. Technically, there's, you know, no established district, but that's the area they're covering, so.
Do you want to mention, who's, who's running the thing over in the western part?
I haven't heard back. Nobody contacted me. I just, I did have a call from somebody from Joyce and I didn't even know the meeting was coming up. It was on the eleventh or whatever it was.
Yeah, that's.
Which are the trustees? They're the ones handling it, not.
Well, you might want to relay to them that they need to do the same thing then is everybody signs to get one big twenty eighty agreement with. And I don't know whether that's with Four City, Winnebago now, or what it would be.
It would be, I would assume, I must have to be Winnebago because Lake Mels was gonna cover the northern part and Four City is covering the southern part, so.
Well, just like it has.
Like it has been.
Yep. So you might want to get in touch with somebody there and say, hey, get one of those signed. So if you, well, we almost, you, like you said, we got to. We need a twenty, they need to have a twenty eighty agreement in place, so. Anyway, it was brought to my attention and I thought I'd mention it here.
Right. How's, I mean, so what, what's your intention to pay according to where the calls go to?
Well.
From dispatch?
Well, the one I figured it out that day, I figured it out by population. And I figured it out by dispatch. How many calls go into those grids? And see, we can get that on a quarterly basis. And we'd know exactly how many calls go in that grid. And then according to like with Mason City, let's say ten calls go into that grid down there. We go at five hundred dollars a call and send them that much money.
If that's what they bill for.
Now, we're going off of what we got coming in. And it should match up anyway.
Should, yeah.
It should match up. If anything, it might be less.
Right, because if they, if they did not respond or if they got canceled.
That's right. It should be, could be less.
Yeah.
So even if we send them more money than that, they'll just put it on next quarter's tab.
Sure.
You know, because it's still gonna get up to the maximum. When that money's gone in those three districts, whatever that fee, whatever that money is, you're done.
Right.
We're done. You know.
Is Northwood okay with accepting tax dollars?
Yeah.
I'll check. I, I, you know what I mean? I.
They should be.
They should be because it's been promoted and been pushed as there's no tax dollars into this entity.
Right.
And that's what the big push was, was a free ambulance service.
I could check on.
So that's, that's the curiosity I'm wondering is.
So how else you do it? Because otherwise that money belongs to every citizen of Worth County. You can't just take six townships and say, sorry, boys, you're not getting anything.
Right. I mean, I guess they'd have the right to refuse it.
Yep. Like, yeah, that would, that would be a different deal.
They're gonna refuse it.
Mm-hmm.
So, just, just curious, you know.
Yeah.
And.
But that's not tax dollars.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's not tax dollars. You're right.
Tax.
Federal.
It's federal money, but it ain't tax dollars.
Still come out of your pocket.
Right, wrong all the way, but I don't, I think you're thinking more like tax dollars that we collect in this county.
True.
Yeah, it's not tax dollars.
Well, yeah, but.
Yes.
And we could do it by population too, except for when you go by population, then Northwood covers a casino for nothing.
Yeah.
And we do get quite a bit of kickback from there.
Going forward, it's gonna probably stay by district. So it's looking, you know, so we have kind of figured that out. So we'll start figuring out now is two years from now, so. Figuring out what's right and fair. I guess, I don't know. It'll be developing.
And like, you know, if you want I bounced that one off the wall that day too about possibly helping out down the road.
Mm-hmm.
But after Wednesday's meeting. It's gonna be tight. It's gonna be tight, period.
Maybe designate the funds and, you know, if they have equipment needs or something down the road or something, maybe just say that you're notched for that department. I don't know.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's not gonna get any better. We're thinking that. It's only gonna get worse from here, so.
Well, I'm just kind of thinking that five hundred bucks cracked for you guys down there. If we could get that bill lowered down to like three, three and a half, it would help you out that much more than that ends me. Because you said it was gonna be tight now and when I figured it out, it was gonna be tight.
Mm-hmm.
And is there a way that we can reconcile their, their calls or what they say are calls to what our records are? So that we know the numbers or we agree with the numbers?
They all have call sheets.
Yep.
Okay.
But the thing, so you'll I don't know how much info you'll get on where the call was from them because of tip, uh sheriff's office is different. They could, he was dispatched to this.
You're not gonna get an address. We're gonna get it. You're gonna get a grid.
Grid, a grid.
Yeah, and, and as long as we got, where our grids are set up right now.
Yeah.
Where they're broke down the way they should be broke down in the three districts, we're fine with getting those grids.
Right, so I guess they would need to know what those grids break down to.
Right.
And then.
It should be it. Yeah, well, basically, they don't.
We're going for grid one, we're grid three and grid, grid seven.
They don't even.
Three calls in each.
We don't, they, they, they don't even need to know that. If they got twenty calls, then let's say you're grid one down there and they got twenty calls in grid one, and Marilyn's got eighteen calls going in grid one and two going in up here in grid two. She knows automatically and we would find out that two of them calls went into this grid up here.
Or something else, right?
Yeah.
It'd be similar to what we did when we were tracking how many missed calls we were getting. That's what you'd get.
Right.
On. Yeah, yeah. Well, I know it's it's ba- I think it's basically our area because they have an agreement with Northwood, so they're gonna build Northwood directly. That, you shouldn't even see that bill come through here. Right? If, if, if Northwood calls for Mason City.
Last.
Mason City's building Northwood directly.
Yes, the last thing Blake told me was whatever the county amount is, is what Northwood gets billed. So if they come into this territory, I would have to say, yes, they're going to bill Northwood for that.
Because they have an agreement with them. So basically, as you'd see, is the southeastern portion and then.
Yep, and the western edge, if they go over there.
Yep.
Because why wouldn't, why wouldn't they just put that on our bill if, because Northwood didn't make it?
But you'd still have the call.
Yeah.
The call happened here.
I guess.
If they bring another entity in, you'd still have the number of call. That'd still be a call.
Right. I guess the reason that's why I'm saying we go by what the dispatcher's got for the calls in that grid and pay off from that then at the rate we'd pay that bill at five hundred, these two bills at four hundred, it just means that the western edge and the north edge, their money would last a little longer than what it does in the south edge. But if we overpay it, it's just gonna go on your next quarter's bill.
Right.
When that amount is gone, you're done. Because we don't have any more ARP money.
Right. Yeah.
And see if we shoot at five hundred dollars a call, we're looking at using, according to what I figured out for a two-year average, we're gonna use three hundred and seven thousand dollars of ARP funds. And we do have that much there. We can go a little higher if you want, but because I did figure it out at five hundred and fifty dollars a call too. So just something to think about. Biggest thing I wanted to mention was that twenty eighty agreement that got brought up to me, my attention of having those all signed before we do anything.
No, we have to. It's just.
And, and, and if there's a top figure out here and you all of a sudden go, your calls go way down, you just go that much. It just lasts you that much longer.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Anyway, give us some thought.
Yeah.
Um, I guess it's nine. Oh, okay.
Read that clock.
Then I'll hang tight.
Of course.
I read the wrong clock.
No.
And that's my fault.
As far as to keep. If you want to talk, just people service, but um like I said, I'll be dealing with them on the sanitarian portion right now. They've got somebody in here covered to run the facility. To run the facility. Um, so, but we need to get the sanitary thing figured out, and I'll get Jessie a call over done. And see her thoughts, because that's still gonna continue.
Yeah, I know she's following some ideas, I see it's in emails.
And just keep that on there too, Jackie, cuz I think the first or second week of October, they wanna come in and introduce the new person, we started the one fifth. So, uh, peoples will be coming in at some point, so we'll just leave that on there, if they show up, then we can. Just have the special ones.
Okay.
At least they've got a replacement. Yep.
Yep. Did you hear anything back from Jeff on general systems and looking those? All those forms over?
I didn't see the response email on that one.
We'll talk later.
You sent it to him. We talked about it, and then you took the whole works and sent it to him, and I just was wondering if he.
I, we already talked about it, but we'll talk later.
Okay. Ooh, it's nine A M. Oh, recess the regular meeting. And take a motion to open the special election canvas. I have a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries.
We'll just look at, basically, there are three hundred and thirty-nine total. There were. Was it a hundred and seventy-seven, yes, and a hundred and sixty-two? No. So there were. Four. For Manly. The precinct we had there, it was a hundred and thirty-five, yes, and ninety-five, no. You know, in town, it was. Thirty, yes, and fifty-two, no, and then there were also twenty-nine, um, absentees that are into those numbers, so. It's a done deal.
Okay.
So everything will go here?
One seventy-seven, one sixty-two, three thirty-nine total, yep.
And then we'll have a second count, second canvas next week, when we have the, um, results from the others, or. The other two, um. Counties, cuz Mitchell is actually technically in with ours.
Okay.
And Floyd and Saravortos, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's it.
So we can sign this from now?
Yeah. And two of those. And we could actually do those. Yeah.
Is there a motion?
After we close. We can probably close the public hearing if there's no.
If there's, is there any comments from the public on it? Hearing no comments from the public, I will take a motion to close. The special election canvas meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries, I will reconvene the regular meeting. Is there a motion to accept this?
A motion to accept the canvas.
You know, a second.
I have a motion of second to accept the canvas, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries.
For both. For the school and for.
Anything else you have for someone that we need to do?
Nope.
Are we done with that one? Then we will go on to department head discussions, anything, Dan?
Oh, yeah, I got a list.
Oh, great.
Um, you seen my email I sent out on Terry Lynn didn't accept the job, while she ended up turning it down. We did do two interviews yesterday, um, we're waiting to see if any more come in. Through the week, otherwise, we did have a couple of good interviews, Jeff, so hopefully. We get through this week and, uh, we'll probably be making an offer sometime next week. Um. I did contact a couple of you about, I did have a couple of cars over in Algonah. Um, standing by for the family at the house for patrol over there. Um, I do have three vehicles that will be going over tomorrow for the funeral. Um, representing Worth County, and they did not have enough Class A ties, so Worth County borrowed fourteen ties over there. Um, our equipment they needed for the funeral, so, um. We do have one of our guys is the honor guard for the state association, he'll be working honor guard duties over there pretty much all day tomorrow. Uh, myself. Uh, Chief Deputy Luther and Jail Administrator Anderson will be leaving. After this meeting, sometime a little bit this later this afternoon, we got jail school down in Des Moines, we won't be back until Monday, so Sergeant Smith will be in charge when we're. Gone, we are taking two vehicles, if one of us do have to come back, we'll have access to come back, so. Um. Last thing I have. We kind of a little funny situation happened, not really funny, but a situation happened on a dog call. That we, uh, ended up getting ownership of this dog, which I don't agree with, from, I was in an. Good agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture on that. But, uh, we had to take care of the, this dog, and it had some health issues that. We ended up paying for the euthanasia and, uh, the disposal of the carcass. Um, through the vet's office, so, so we did it on the up and up, but I got a hundred and fifty dollar bill. I can give you further on it. At a later time, if you should want to hear more on it, but we will have a bill coming through from the vet's office that I'll be taking care of. It would, a hundred and fifty is gonna be a lot cheaper than trying to argue with the USDA and lawyer fees and everything else, I thought, that's the way to go. So, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Well, we had a couple, um, calls yesterday, and I guess we just need to know from our office standpoint, what is the procedure? That people should be doing for permits? For the county.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
That, do they?
Talking about, yeah.
Okay, so just forwarding to them.
Yeah.
Yes.
His, his emails there and his phone numbers, it's all on the website too, so.
Okay.
Should be, they should be able to access, get access to him if he can.
So I know somebody, well, we had two calls and then somebody walked in, so I just. I sent the one walk-in upstairs, I didn't know what the process was.
Yeah, just get a whole map.
Just get him that's information and.
He can email him the permit and fill it out and email, you don't even have to get together.
Perfect, right.
So.
Yeah, for the most part, being rural, there's usually not, uh. Too much with setbacks. They can draw it out on a map, you know, it's, it's not like you're in town tight where you gotta be. Five, ten feet, you know, so.
Yep, that's the starting point is math. Uh, Teresa says that. The hunting license and the tags are picking up, so at least we'll get some more money in there. That is one of the things we learned last Wednesday down in.
They did both.
They bumped it from a buck and a quarter to two dollars, wow. So we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna spend all that money.
Bring out the braid.
I don't see anybody else out there in the departments. Uh, Supervisors Weekly, what'd you have, AJ?
I had a shore up watershed comprehensive plan committee. Um, we're just getting to the tail end of finishing up our comprehensive plan for that D N R grant we received. Um, so we meet again next month as our quarterly meeting, and. We'll go through that, we have an open house in November, and we should be finalizing and improving our plan in January. So, um, once that's done, we will be all good. With our comprehensive plan and fulfilling the. D N R's grant, basically. And then the next step is to. Uh, get more. Communities involved, there's still some communities that are part of this that, that haven't, uh, any representation there yet, and. They're, they're the ones that haven't had flood issues over the years, so hopefully we get them involved, then the conversations come up on. A director, uh, but I know you guys, the procedure has had that same conversation. Um, cuz now the Winnebago watershed is gonna, that'll be starting to form. Um, which the Winnebago flows into the Chorrock, Chorrock, goes into Cedar. So what's probably gonna happen is it may end up being a big joint meeting at some point in the next year of.
All the upper, at least all the upper districts.
Yeah, all these three, uh, with a joint director, be able to get grant money is, that would, that would pay their. Salary, but, um, they got to get grant monies for projects and that sort of things, and because one group. We've decided one group can't do it on their own, they're just not enough for it, and our procedure's been going for a long, long time.
Yeah, I mean, just, I don't know where the money's gonna come from, cuz I know we're, you're talking about asking for money from the counties and the cities, and all the cities are saying no, and.
Well, and that's a big push that we've had with conversations with others is, is, um. You know, let the legislature, the state's pushing this water quality thing, they say it all the time, you hear it all the time, but there's like no funding out there for it. So, the thing that needs to be done is, we're trying to push on our legislature a little harder to start putting some of that money towards. The water quality that you've been preaching about for the last five years, trying to improve water quality, and I, well, well. It's time to start helping with that, and talking with Jimmy Anderson, if that I will goes through that extra. Penny on the sales tax or whatever, there is a portion of that that can be used for. Watersheds, water quality, that kind of stuff, so. It's gonna be a lot of work, just a lot of time into it, but hopefully we can get something figured out, so. That's all I had last.
What'd you have, Mark?
Well, we did, we did have the procedure. And I was zooming in, and then we got about a half hour of the meeting, and we just pulled the lawsuit, and so we didn't, didn't get a whole lot out of that meeting last week, and. I attended at least the morning session down there at Des Moines, um, got the gist of what's going on, a lot of unhappy people, but, uh. I'm really not sure what we're gonna have to be looking forward to down the road, I. Fully see maybe this too, working towards some consolidations at the counties, I'd say, because. They're really limiting us what we can do, which is understandable, but, uh. You know, that's, the dollars aren't there, we're gonna, they're gonna have to give us options to do something else, more. More sharing or something to make this work, because it's gonna get tough.
Yes, it is.
That's, that's kind, that was kind of my takeaway of it, to me.
Yeah.
Your screw, I mean, you're, you're gonna have to follow the rules.
She's, the governor's decided we're going to three dollars and fifty cents. A thousand. In four years, and that's where it's gonna, it's gonna, everybody's going there.
So we do have a little adjustment period, but that don't mean anything, we still have to figure this out, so we need.
We do it gradually, you can do it all at once. But, yeah, I agree with you, there's gonna be. We may have to work together here.
Or find a way to really increase our revenue.
Yep.
You know, through our. Or, yeah, yeah, cut services, or the other thing, so. I'm not just looking at you, I'm just.
They bought, you understand.
If you cut employees, what are you doing? You're cutting services.
And that's raises.
And. I did talk to some people down there that are at five point something, so.
Some people are really gonna be hurt.
Some people are really got ways to start whacking.
Yep.
But, that's basically what it comes down to.
Yep, so that's what I, that's all.
The percentages. You know, the one oh two and the one oh three, depending on whether you're. You pop above that six percent or not, it basically is just a. It's a. They're help, they're trying to help you, but it's just a Band-Aid, you're, you're going to three fifty in four years, whether you like it or not. And if you're not there, you're going there, that's it. That's the way I took it, did you take it that way, Jackie? Yep, that's the way I took it.
Or maybe even below.
Or below.
Oh, yeah.
It still comes into play, though.
Yeah, basically, you wanna go, you wanna go to three dollars and fifty cents long before. She says you're going there because you could end up below.
Yes. And then it'd be hard to get back to.
Yeah, well, well, the way it looked to me, I don't think you can get back, can you?
Well, you'd have to, what was the deal, they, they explained that a little bit, there would be a way to get there, but it would not be an easy process. Yeah, I mean. Pretty much have to be broken.
Was she up? And I just.
Well, you know, we saw it common with this year's. Consolidations of Department of Human Services and Public Health and. The second judicial district, getting rid of that board that I'm on, and I'm sure there's other stuff, we saw this thing coming, it's been coming for a couple of years.
Just wish they'd give us an idea on where they're going with the courts and all the stuff that we have to provide, if there's gonna be any changes.
Or they're gonna help.
If they would assist with that. Well, then, it could, that would, that would be the thing we could help loosen up on to put those dollars somewhere else. But there's a lot of expense there.
And then we'd know what to do with the building.
Right.
Right, yep. Yeah, well, definitely.
But, we don't have the money, we don't have the money, I, I think we should at least have the right to choose what we want to provide or not, by at that point, but we probably won't.
And at what level? And at what level, yep. But. Yeah, they don't like the fact that we're going over three dollars and fifty cents. So. That's what I picked up, uh, is that all you had?
Yeah.
And I guess that's enough about.
Yeah.
H F seven eighteen session, I'm still deciphering some of that stuff, what I got down there.
I've heard it a bunch of times.
Yeah. I had Partners for Children, and the only thing I wanna bring up there is. The fact that we work with C P P C, which is Community Partnership for Protecting Children. We had a community planning group, and one of the things that they decided that they would like to do is provide. Movies. So I got them in touch with. I gave them, I just said, Northwood's got one. So we're the first ones on the list, on October eighth, and this is. Almost ninety-nine percent cut and stone. At seven P M at the Northwood Theater, which is a Sunday night, because normally the showing's there at four, they're gonna show the movie The Hill. Which is a physically disabled. Teenager, young person that wants to play Major League Baseball, and it's a true story. So.
Cool.
All those, they're picking up the tab on all those tickets. If you wanna pack the place, you can, if, they're gonna have flyers on it, it'll be in the newspaper. But I just thought I'd bring it to your attention. So, uh, other than that, I had, uh. Worth County Hazardous Medication Plan. Uh, Mark, me, and Jesse Luther showed up for that, it wasn't a big turnout. Considering it involves all the schools, all the towns, the cities, and everybody, yeah, that's not. Anyway, I thought there'd be a little bigger turnout for that. But basically, they just went down the plan and the different. Levels of mitigation. He wanted to know where we were at there, and Mark had a real good idea on that, so we worked our way down to that. Uh. The other thing that. We did after the department head meetings is we put together a group for custodial duties. In the courthouse, and there was four of us on that. And then. We went all to the departments and figured out what they all wanted done. And from there. Teresa kinda put it together, we did have a recommendation at the time from one of the end of the department heads. That she thought we should break it down into what we want as custodial duties in the courtroom. And then the grounds. So you guys got an email on this? I hope you looked it over, take a look at it, see if you see anything that's out of line there. And it is broke down by custodial duties in the buildings. And then, other than that, it'd be like a groundskeeper.
I thought the list looked pretty good, and I didn't really see anything that I ever subtract.
No, it didn't look bad to me at all either.
And, and you know. It's something that we'll have to give to Brian and have him look over. Uh. And it was also brought up, you know, that. If it's too much for one individual, we may have to get a groundskeeper, or we may have to. You know, I guess that's something we, as supervisors, now, we got the list. We'll have to sit down and figure out where we wanna go next with this thing. So.
Good.
Anyway, yeah, take a look at that, I do have a question, and one of the questions that got brought up to me is with the individual. That's taken care of the. Building itself. You know. What is the boiler system all involved? As far as, does anybody know?
No.
I keep, I keep hearing about, well, checking on, and I saw it on there. Monitor the. Is there like certain things you gotta do every month?
Brian would be the only one that knows.
Yeah.
I just was wondering what was that all involved?
When we redid our HVAC over on our side, but six years ago, seven years ago, we're completely off the boil over there.
You're on your own.
We're on our own, yep, we got an HVAC and then they put interference in the garage and that, yeah.
And he's back this.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, uh, but anyway, yeah, take a look at that, see if there's anything that's, doesn't look right to you, see if there's anything you wanna add. But look it over and we'll discuss it later, okay? Uh, that's all I had. Anything for next week's agenda that's. Needs to get added? I don't see anything, no.
We're good.
Good view?
Good to me.
In that case. In that case, then I will take a motion to adjourn. A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.